Call to order, Bedford Township Planning Commission, regular meeting, March 11th, 2020. Please stand if you can for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garvick, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Fritz. President. Mr. Helm.
Here.
Mrs. Tinnevere.
Here.
Mr. Mahoney.
Here.
Dennis Jenkins is excused. Joe Garvick here. Brad Helm.
You got me.
Matt Angler.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Garvick. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. If there's nothing else to add, then I will entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passed. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the February 12th, 2020 meeting. This, I will entertain a motion for anyone that was here for that meeting.
Move to approve the minutes of the last meeting as submitted.
Motion in support. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? None. Any excused? None. Perfect. Next, we'll move on to public comment. This is for anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any of the, on anything tonight. But if you are here for the public hearings, save that for each individual public hearing. Seeing that we have none, we will move on to the new business, which is, the first one is open to public hearing regarding the request from, Pig, I'm not going to say this correctly. Piggin, thank you. Bushner LLC to rezon from C1 Local Commercial to R2A One Family Residential on parcel number 5802-665-00500 and 5802-665-00600. Two vacant parcels located on the west side of Lewis Avenue on Borg Avenue and Valeta Avenue, Temperance, Michigan. Karen, can you give us some background?
Yes. The history on this parcel is, at the time, the plan for second addition of Tuanda Estates was approved in 1957. The subject two parcels were reserved for commercial use and zoning, were rezoned to, or were zoned to C1 Local Business as identified on the adopted zoning map of May 5, 1977, when the zoning ordinance was adopted. The planning department has received many inquiries over the years regarding the possibility of combining the lots to create one parcel that could be developed and adhere to the requirements of the ordinance, such as, but not limited to, parking landscaping setbacks, as both lots have two front yard setbacks. Typically, you would be able to combine lots within a subdivision, as is an option in this case. However, there is a six-foot easement between the two lots, which creates a construction issue and that a structure cannot encroach on an easement, thus rendering an encumbrance. On February 18th, 2020, the township board gave direction to move forward with the rezoning request. The request is to rezone two vacant parcels within the second addition to Tuanda Estates. Parcel's numbers 5802-665-00500, lot 38, is plus or minus .527 acre with 153 feet of frontage on Lewis Avenue and 150 feet of frontage on Borg. Parcel number 5802-665-00600, lot 39, is plus or minus .534 acre with 154 feet of frontage on Lewis Avenue and 50 feet of frontage on Valeta. Municipal water and sanitary sewer is available to the sites, both sites. The surrounding zonings are, to the north, C3 General Commercial, south, C1 Local Commercial, east, Agricultural, and west, R2A Single Family Residential. The master plan adopted on October 28th, 2015, designates this area as village center and further describes the intent to promote a concentrated pedestrian-oriented environment, recognizing the historical rural villages, having a mix of residential, retail service, and office uses, all being acceptable uses. The planning department requested review of the rezoning request to be conducted by Lucy Fortin of the Manikin Smith Group and planner for Bedford Township. Ms. Fortin prepared an overall review of the subject area and concluded the proposed zoning and use is consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the township's master plan. In conclusion, it was suggested the planning commission make a recommendation to the township board to approve the rezoning request for the following key reason. The subject properties are vacant, a residential land use is consistent with the township master plan, the properties are located in an area of predominantly residential land uses, unless rezoned, single-family homes cannot be built on the subject properties, and the properties have access to the township's sanitary sewer and water system.
Thank you, Karen. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Garvick, can you take the roll, please?
Ms. Tinnevere.
Yes.
Mr. Fritz.
Yes.
Mr. Angler.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins is excused. Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Mr. Garvick, yes.
Motion approved. Public hearing is open. Is there anybody here from Piggin and Bushner LLC that would like to come on up to the podium, if you'd like? If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Leanna Buckner, 8369 Burning Bush Road, Rosheal, Michigan. I'm the member rep from MARB, the owner of the prop, or I'm sorry, Piggin Buckner, the owner of the property. This is Mr. Manny Evola. He's my representative, he's, oh, he's my real estate rep.
Thank you. Is there anything you'd like to add to Karen's summary?
No, I, that was very efficient, yeah.
Okay. You can have a seat and we'll continue.
Wait, I have some.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Oh.
What?
We're in the public hearing portion.
Okay, can they come back up later?
Yes. All right.
The only thing that I would add is, the history, the time that I've had this property listed, we've received some calls about the commercial use. Every time that utility easement comes up, they see that it's, it's not big enough to do a building and the appropriate parking, that's, that's kind of what's got us stuck here with nothing.
Got you. Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody that would like to come speak during the public hearing portion, if you come up to the podium, please? If you could just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lee Grau, G-R-A-U. I'm at 1014 Borg, right next to the vacant property. And I'm, I'm not here to complain. All I wanted to do was, I did some research and I, I know what R2 is, but R2A, I don't know what the A stands for. Are we just talking about straight housing? Individual housing?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing else? Okay. And then, the only other thing that I wanted to mention is that there's a drainage problem, which isn't really my problem, but there's a drainage problem there which causes problems back. So, I hope somebody addresses that part. That's really all, I wanted to find out what's, what's going on, so.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'm not sure what the A stands for. Karen, do you know what the A stands for?
We have two zoning districts in R2A and R2B. The only thing that is different between the two, they all require the same amount of frontage, is the square footage of the home. And it's pretty obsolete. One's 900 feet and one's 1,200 feet, so.
Thank you.
A minimum.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said on the difference?
The difference is the square footage of the home, the minimum square footage, one at 900 square feet and one at 1,200.
I didn't hear the 900.
Which is the A?
900.
I'll tell you in a second.
Once we close the public hearing.
R2A.
Yeah. What is R2A? What's the square footage?
1,200, 1,200 square feet.
Thank you. Seeing that we have no one else, if you'd like to speak, come up to the podium, please, and just state your name and address for the record.
Jim Hunter, 1025 Valeta. I'm just curious if these do get rezoned to commercial, will they be Lewis Road addresses or will they be a Borg and a Valeta address?
Right now, the request is to rezone from commercial to residential. They are commercial right now.
Right, I'm saying if they get rezoned to residential, would they be Lewis Avenue-facing homes and addresses? Or would they be petitioned to be one facing Borg, one facing Valeta?
Do you know that answer, Karen?
The curb cuts are actually granted by the road commission. However, the, the way the lots are set up, it appears that they would have direct access from Valeta, one from Valeta and one from Borg, rather than on Lewis Avenue, to create curb cuts that would be so close to the already curb cuts, might not be approved by the road commission. But it, they did oversize the frontage to accommodate the setback from Lewis Avenue, so I would imagine it would just fall right in line with what's already there.
So, even if they're, even if the houses are built facing Lewis, the driveways would be on Valeta and Borg?
I can't say for certain, but I, I can't imagine that they would face Lewis Avenue, they would face the.
Well, considering the properties are advertised as Lewis Avenue, that's why I'm asking, because the listing says Lewis Avenue property, commercial. And I'm asking if they do split back to residential, would they then flip and become Borg, Valeta properties?
They could do either, but the setbacks that would be required, because there are two front yards there and to, to allow for the rear yards and the side yard setbacks, it would, the development would be served better to be facing Borg and Valeta.
Okay, we're just curious, because we're in the process now, they're doing the planning and appraisals, they're about redoing the roads and sewers. I'm just figuring if they're giving Lewis Road addresses and don't put them included as two properties that have to contribute if this passes, and then when they sell them, they get petition to build driveways coming in off Borg and Valeta?
These two properties would still have frontage on Borg and Valeta, and they are part of the subdivision. So, they are included as part of the subdivision, whether they're commercially zoned, residentially zoned, or were the curb cuts.
Right, alright.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Seeing that we have none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Garvick, can you take the roll?
Mrs. Tinnevere.
Aye.
Mr. Mahoney.
Aye.
Mr. Angler.
Yes.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins is excused. Mr. Garvick is yes.
Motion passed.
Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Now, I will, we can discuss.
We're getting something from the sound guy, I think we, is there? Joe, you guys speaking to your mic? Thank you.
How's that, better?
That's better. Yes, discussion now, if there's anyone that would like to, any questions or comments? We can bring up the applicant again if you would like to ask them.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Could you come back up for Nancy has some questions for you?
Either one, I mean, or both. Thank you, thank you. I, I, well, I guess the reason for my question is I'm a strong, strong advocate of mid-level commercial development in Bedford Township. So, in, in both of our public hearings tonight, as I reviewed the material, I was just trying to decide what is best for Bedford Township. I want what's best for the landowner as well. And that was one of my questions that Mr. Evola answered. Because I just wanted to make sure that some attempt had been made to, to keep it commercial. To me, commercial out in front of residential, you see it all over in different parts of the country. It's Albania, they have all kinds of service-oriented commercial in front of developments and homing, housing developments, and to me, this was a perfect thing for that. So, I guess you have made attempt over the years, and I know this has been vacant for a long time.
Yeah.
And there's an issue with, what was it that you said? Some easement?
There's an easement, oh, go ahead.
No, well, it's utility easement.
You have to step up to the mic or he's going to come out of the room.
I don't want to get yelled at. There's a utility easement and it runs half, like, right in the middle of the two lots. And so, with that placement, and it's, it's from Lewis Avenue all the way to the back, so with that placement, even to put a minimum-sized building there, we wouldn't be able to put in the parking that, that the commercial would require for that. And so, that, the only valid, probably approach that we had, I got a call from someone that wanted to fence the lot and use it as a salvage yard for cars. And I thought, oh, that's all, you know? But though, other than that, anybody that had any kind of viable interest, they, they weren't able to fit it on.
I see. What was wrong with that fellow? Because who would want, who would want that? We would have had an audience full if that was the question.
Well, I would have been in front.
Well, thank you for protecting the residents in that regard. I understand that the easement, you can't build on the easement, so, and it's not, we really can't take into consideration what, we're just supposed to decide whether the rezoning is appropriate. But are you planning on selling that, those lots to another developer, another builder? If it's residential?
Probably.
You're not in the building business, okay? Okay. That answers my question, thank you.
Mr. Garvick.
You know, I think it protects the other owners, because you could get somebody else coming in there that falls under that zoning, that you could do nothing about. And that's, that's the sad part, and, and, yeah. So, wait a minute. How many years have you known this guy? Since he's born, right?
No, well, I've only known him maybe, what, eight years?
Oh, come on.
Yes.
So, he's a good friend of your dad's?
I know, well, do you know my dad? Or his dad? He knows your, oh, he knows too. Now, I've known him.
Yeah?
Yes, for a long time.
But I think, I think it's a great deal. I mean, I do with, with, to protect you, if I lived there, cheese or pizza, I wouldn't want something that. Well, right, and like he, like he said, the, like he said, the way it's, the way it's zoned now, it could be.
Try not to have any conversation, because no one can hear you from the home. Yes, Karen?
We have had, over the years, the planning department has had many, many inquiries on these two parcels. That, it's a six-foot utility easement on each parcel, so it's a total of 12 feet. And every time, we would work up the setbacks and what they would, what size the structure and what the minimum parking requirements would be, it just wasn't feasible, economically feasible or financially feasible to do that for any developer that came in. So, they would come in, we would work with them, and they would, they would walk away only because it wouldn't work with that utility easement. They couldn't combine the parcel and cross over with a structure to make those lots large enough to fit everything they needed in.
I think it makes sense to honor the request. Our Manikin Smith advisor says the same thing, and it does fit what the master plan says. And it obviously is not being well-used as a commercial option. So, I think, going back to R2A, it just makes sense.
So, I'm curious to know, are you getting this rezoned to sell the properties? Or will you have somebody build a home on these properties?
I, I would like to sell them. We would like to sell them, yes.
You have to speak into the mic?
We would like to sell them, yes. We will look for, Manny will, you know, look to sell the property as a residential piece of property. No, I won't be building on it, no.
Me neither.
Nancy?
I'm, I'm concerned about the drainage problem that Ms. Grau. Do you know about that? And is it caused?
I don't even know about the easement, I'll tell you that.
About Manny, do you know that there's a drainage issue? Is it a?
Isn't that, I'm sorry.
She'd have to come to the mic. I just, I'm concerned because we want to get that addressed. It may not be because of this rezoning at all, but I'm a member of the township board. I'd like to take it back to our supervisor, so that if there's a flooding or a drainage issue over the road, then we'd like to have either the drain commission or the road commission come out there. Okay, I'll talk to you after the meeting, how's that?
I see, I think that corner floods.
Dennis Kohler would make sure for sure that the drain, he doesn't let anything go without the drain being taken care of.
Oh, good.
And actually, it'd probably be better after this is done.
Yes, he would make sure it all flows properly and to the right ways.
Okay, so, we'll take care of that. Brad will. Thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Any other questions or cons, concerns? If not, I will entertain a motion at this time. This is a recommendation to the board. Yes, Marty?
If you could advise the petitioner, the applicant, that they have an opportunity or choice to defer the decision, because we don't have an entire planning commission present and we require a vote of majority of the full body, that is a vote of four, to be in favor of a recommendation to rezon. So, you have the opportunity to defer a decision to another time when there's a full body.
The decision was, she is okay with our current status, so we will continue with the motion and.
Okay, I would like to move that the planning commission recommended the township board the rezoning request for property number 5802-665-005-00 from C1 Local Business to R2A Single Family Residential District based on the following key reasons. The subject properties are vacant, the residential land use is consistent with the township master plan, the properties are located in an area of predominantly residential land uses, unless rezoned, this single-family home, a single-family home cannot be built on the subject properties, and the properties have access to the township's sanitary sewer and water system. And I'd like to add that we make a recommendation to the township board that the road commission, that the request be made to the road commission for property access off of Borg and Valeta.
I have a motion. Do I have support?
Second.
Mr. Garvick, can you take?
Who supported it?
Brad.
Mrs. Tinnevere.
Aye.
Mr. Helm.
Aye.
Mr. Mahoney.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Garvick, aye. And Mr. Angler?
Yes. Motion passed, 6-0. Next, we'll move on to 7B, which is an open to the public hearing regarding the request from Fire Creek Real Estate LLC to rezone from R, from C1 Local Commercial to RT2 Family Residential on parcel number 5802-034-00110. Vacant property located on the west side of Lewis Avenue on the south side of Fire Creek, Temperance, Michigan. Karen, can you give us some background?
Yes, the history and the site characteristics. This subject parcel was once RT2 Family residentially zoned, and on February 20, 2018, was rezoned at the owner's request to C1 Local Commercial. The applicant originally intended to construct his office on the subject site, however, required setbacks from the residentially zoned parcels and the fact that the site has two front yards, Lewis Avenue and Fire Creek Drive, created difficulty in meeting ordinance requirements, and the applicant has since constructed an office at a different location. On February 18, 2020, the township board gave direction to move forward with the rezoning request. The request is to rezone a vacant parcel from C1 Local Commercial to RT2 Family Residential. The subject parcel has plus or minus 139.4 feet of frontage on Lewis Avenue and plus or minus 165.8 feet of frontage on Fire Creek. It should be noted, this site will only have access from Fire Creek with no curb cut onto Lewis Avenue. Municipal water and sanitary sewer are available. The surrounding zonings are, to the north, R2B Single Family Residential, south, C1 Local Commercial, east, PUD Plan Unit Development, which is Hickory Creek and Hickory Ridge Assisted Living, and the west, RT2 Family Residential and R2B Single Family Residential. The master plan adopted on October 28th, 2015, designates this area as mixed use and further describes the intent to provide for a mixture and/or combination of residential, office, and lower-intensity commercial uses outside of the township's village center of Temperance, Samaria, and Lamontville. The planning department requested a review of the rezoning requests be conducted by Lucy Fortin of the Manikin Smith Group and planner for Bedford Township. Ms. Fortin prepared an overall review of the subject area and concluded the proposed zoning and use is consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the township's master plan. In conclusion, it was suggested the planning commission make a recommendation to the township board to approve the rezoning request for the following key reasons. It is consistent with the township master plan goals and policies. It follows the mixed-use future land use designation. It provides for a suitable transitional use between the adjacent single-family residential uses on the west side of Lewis Avenue corridor and the commercial and high-intensity residential and land uses along the east side of the corridor. It is supported by adequate utility and road infrastructure, and there is adequate room within the property for buffering and or screening to alleviate some of the potential negative impacts of the adjacent higher-intensity land uses.
Thank you, Karen. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion's open.
Support.
Mr. Garvick, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Tinnevere.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Garvick votes yes. Mr. Angler?
Yes. Public hearing is open. At this time, I will, if there's anyone that would like to speak on behalf of this, now would be the time to come to the podium. Seeing that we have none, I will entertain motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Second.
Mr. Garvick, can you take the roll, please?
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Mr. Fritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Tinnevere.
Yes.
Mr. Garvick, yes. Mr. Angler.
Yes. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a representative for Fire Creek that would like to come to the podium? Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Bryce Bankowski, 9226 Village Meadows Drive.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Bankowski? Ms. Tinnevere?
Well, just, just to let you know, Mr. Bankowski, I totally love the developments that you have done in Bedford Township there. The houses are extremely pleasant, not just, I mean, they're beautiful. They're beautiful homes. And I, and I appreciate the development that you have. I drive around and I think, yeah, I wish I would have gotten that kind of a house.
Thank you.
If we were, if we were younger, we'd be coming to contract with you, but. That being said, I, it has nothing to do with you as a developer or the kinds of development that you produce. But I did have a real, real huge difficulty with this. I talked to my husband, I talked to the attorney, I talked to members of the Planning Department because, again, I'm a huge supporter of commercial, commercially zoned property in Bedford Township. I want to see more of that, not the Toledo and Alexis Road kind of development, but things that are service-oriented to our residents so that we're not spending all of our tax dollars in Ohio. We're spending more here in Bedford. However, as I looked over this and I thought, you know, closer south on Lewis Avenue just seems to be more commercially developed and a need for stronger commercial. So when I read this and you were going to put your office there and you didn't and you put it somewhere else, what was your strongest reasoning for, for not putting it there? Because I think that would be a great place to come to, for, you know, wanting to contract with someone to build a home.
Yeah, so the biggest reason was when I initially changed it to commercial, I put quite a bit of thought into it and planning, but then, once it was changed over, I got deeper into the planning and with the two front yard setbacks, it really restricted the size and trying to get enough parking in there for the...
You need to come closer to the mic.
Trying to get enough parking in there for the size of building that we would need was just, wasn't working out.
Okay, I gotcha. Okay, so we need to do something about that setback stuff.
Yeah, I think the parcel that I have is similar in size to the two that were ahead of me and they, just with those corner lots, made it too tight to fit everything on.
So RT, is that what we're doing, right? RT in this one?
Yes, two-family.
Two-family, is that what you're proposing, like one of those condo things?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we built two next door, plan on building another two-unit building there.
Okay, okay.
So the immediate adjacent are already two-family residential as well.
Correct, yeah.
I remember the initial time when we converted it to commercial and so what you've said makes sense why to go back and it does fit the master plan still and it, like Ms. Fortner said, with the Manik and Smith Group, that it still fits the master plan of the township as well. Unfortunately, it doesn't fit what you needed it, so that's why we're here, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry you had to go through.
No, that's okay.
Paying for this twice, but... Yeah, that's all I, I just wanted to hear from the developer, but I'm good.
And before I forget, we are one member shy tonight, so it's the same scenario where you still need a majority to, a majority of four.
Oh, can I do one more?
Sure.
The condo type, it's not one of those 55 and older thing? I mean, it can be, okay, because I don't know any 55, somebody my age that would want to come out onto Lewis Avenue. There could be somebody out there, Mrs. Grau, maybe.
Yes. Yeah, they're going to be pretty much the same as what I built next door.
Okay, well, I apologize to say I haven't been down Lewis Avenue. I live in the other side.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion at this time. This one is also a recommendation to the Township Board.
Anybody else want to do it? Okay.
You're so good at it.
Yeah, yeah, flattery will get you nowhere. Okay, I would like to move that the Planning Commission recommended the Township Board approval of the rezoning request for an approximate .53 acre property, from C1 Local Business District to RT2 Family Residential District based on the following reasons. It is consistent with the Township master plan goals and policies. It follows the mixed-use, future land use designation. It provides for a suitable transitional use between the adjacent single-family residential use on the west side of Lewis Avenue Corridor and commercial and high-intensity residential senior housing uses, uses along the east side of the corridor. It is supported by adequate utility and road infrastructure and there is adequate room with the property for buffering and/or screening to alleviate some of the potential negative impacts. Did I, did I read the right recommendation or not?
Second.
I have a motion, I have support. Mr. Garvick, can you take the role, please?
Who did the motion support?
Nancy did the motion and Mr. Helm did the support.
Who did the motion?
Nancy.
Oh, you're the one reading it.
You told me to...
Mrs. Tinnevere?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Fritz?
Yes.
Garvick votes yes. Mr. Angler?
Yes. Motion approved. Next, we'll move on to number eight on the agenda, which is public comment. This is for anyone that would like to speak on anything. Seeing that we have none, we will move on to new information here in a second. Sorry, Karen, any new information?
Nothing at this time.
Any commission or staff comment? Nancy?
Sorry, I have to keep you past, what is it, a night in American Idol or what you're missing? I'm not sure. Okay. I have a few things. One, our, the Township Board took up this whole issue of bringing things to the Township Board before they come to planning with regard to rezonings. Marty, do you have anything on that to, that you, did your brothers in the firm have any, have any recommend, anything they wanted this board to know? We talked about it at Township Board meeting.
Well, I wasn't privy to those discussions, but I can imagine that what was talked about would be the, going through that process and giving approval to a property owner applicant for a rezoning in the township, for, to rezone their property, should not be impaired or really be subjected to a decision of the board as to whether they are allowed to apply for a rezoning for their own property. I think the, it's likely the intent of that procedure was that the township shouldn't initiate, or the Planning Commission or the Planning Department shouldn't initiate a rezoning of property on its own without the property owner, without direction or approval from the Township Board. So I think it would be best to distinguish property owned and applied for a rezoning by a property owner should not have to go to the Township Board to get approval because if, if they don't get approval, I think their property rights have been diminished and affected. It should be more directed towards a petition by, or on behalf of the township to rezone property or to amend the zoning ordinance or to amend the zoning map, those kinds of things. So the Township Board should be giving direction to the Planning Department or approval with respect to those items and not to individual property owner rezoning requests.
Right, so I just, I just wanted this commission to know that all rezonings will come here first and then recommended to the Township Board unless it is some kind of a change in the zoning ordinance that a property owner requests that change in, in our, in the wording of the zoning, of the ordinance. Correct, okay, so that we all understand that. Okay, that was number one. And then, number two, I went to a seminar last Wednesday that was, oh my goodness, it was so good. It was very, very educational and it touched on many things that the Planning Commission, we need to distinguish between the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. The Planning Department does, usually does all our work. But what's coming up here, the capital improvement plan that the Township has agreed to work on is, is the responsibility of the Planning Commission. So we're not going to put extra work on the Planning Department because it's the Planning Commission that's required to review this. I'll read it to you out of the Bible, the Township, General Township Bible. "The Planning Commission shall annually prepare a capital improvement program of public structures and improvements. The program shall prioritize the recommended projects that in its opinion are needed and can be accomplished within the ensuing six-year period. Upon request of the Planning Commission, those in charge of the project shall furnish the commission with lists, plans, and estimates of time and costs of the proposed improvements. The foregoing are only mandatory for a township that owns or operates a water supply or sewage disposal system, which we have, but it's run through the Drain Commission." So, and it says the foregoing does not preempt the Township Board's authority with cap, with regard to capital improvement and that's the funding part that the board will have to come up with. But because of this, the Township has never had a capital improvement program and because of that, when it comes to budget time, we're all amiss at trying to come up with money to fund certain improvements on buildings or roads or whatever physical structures that we have. So, starting with this budget year, we are going to put aside money in a capital improvement budget. And then in so doing, this commission has to determine what projects are going to be done. It's a long process, this is just the beginning, but, and there's a committee set aside to, to work on this, which we're going to have committee meetings to bring things to this commission. However, my suggestion at the next Township Board meeting is going to be that this Planning Commission meet once a month to keep up with what's going on in the Capital Improvement Committee, Subcommittee. So is anyone opposed to, now, the Planning Department does not have to participate. We may engage the Planning Department to be the place where everybody brings their reports and they can send them out electronically or however, in the mail, whatever. So they may be the collection agency, but they're not going to have, they have enough to do with all the planning that comes in or the developers that come in to have projects going. So we're not going to cause them to have to do research and look into things. This commission's going to have to do it. So is everyone agreeable to one meeting a month? Or if we find that there's not enough business, that other people haven't done their work yet, like one meeting every two months? No?
Well, finding availability would work, but...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'd be open to it.
Well, it'll be on a Wednesday night, which is what your common thing, common meeting time is, but it's just that for me personally, I just want the members of this board to be engaged because you're going to have to be in the decision-making process and I, I really don't think that it would be advantageous to our community for me to bring the information and you just nod your head and say, okay. I want you to be engaged and I'm hoping you want to be engaged.
Brad does.
I do. We need more, we need more infrastructure, for sure.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying that, that the, there's more to the Planning Commission that, that has been required of the Planning Commission in years past and I'm leaving and so, eventually I'm leaving and so I'm just, this is one of my desires with Dennis Jenkins to have in place before I depart.
May I have a question for Nancy?
Yes.
Nancy, you made a statement that we will set aside this money this time. Who's "we"?
The Township Board, the Township Board.
And how much?
Well, it's a beginning, we haven't decided. Our next, our first budget meeting is tomorrow night and they're open to the public. It's a budget workshop. We don't make any decisions there. We just talk about the money that's coming, the revenue and the expenses that we've already put in place and then what's left over and what we can, I'm hoping personally, $250,000 a year. I'm hoping, okay, but my husband says I dream a lot and so it could be that. But we'll, I'm going to start there with the Township Board and we'll move in a direction that we can all agree to, but Karen, I'm sorry, you had something.
Well, I was just going to mention that we do have set aside on the calendar the first Wednesday of the month on an as-needed basis that the Planning Commission hasn't been utilizing on a regular basis for work, working meetings. So we would have that available to you if that is so chosen to be a night. That is available, that we have that reserved for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, okay, that's, so maybe if we could all think about the first Wednesday of the, yes.
Is there any reason why that can't be incorporated into this meeting that we have?
No, there's no reason at all, but this meeting is...
I mean, make it a half-hour discussion.
What, half-hour?
While we're here already.
Hour and a half, I mean, I'm thinking.
Well, I don't know, you'd have to get a, we'd have to get more than you got now.
I'm kidding, yeah, that's fine, we can do that as well because it's once a month. But these meetings are sporadic depending on what development comes into the, so if we could, I mean, if we have one meeting a month, we'll use it, we'll use that as the meeting.
And if we have a meeting that we're not going to have decision-making being required, that evening is also still available. It may be on the second or the fourth Wednesday of the month. Because you will have information in front of you. Inspections will be conducted. You're not going to be coming into this cold, is that correct? They will have information on...
Right, right.
Conditions we're in at this point and where there may be improvements needed.
Exactly, right. We, we do have a list of township assets and so we're going to go from there. And we're not going to be doing the assessment. The people that are on the committee, well, some of them are very experienced in their field and have the ability to make those decisions about how, what kind of improvement this building would need and how far down the road and all of that. They, we do have people that aren't just an ex-schoolteacher on the, on the committee and they will be giving us that factual information. So it'll just be us, this Planning Commission making the, the final decision as we're required.
I don't know if this is the time to ask you, Nancy, but are you saying that people's on that board, you expect them to give you an estimate of what it's going to cost and what needs to be done?
Yes, yes, we're not going to go out and walk through buildings and decide, does the roof need repair? And how much is it going to cost?
So who's going to be giving us that, the estimates?
Those are going to be the other people on the Planning Commission. We have Barry Bushman from Manik and Smith. We have Tom, excuse me, I'm embarrassed now, Keen from a large corporate business that does this.
Why are you...
What, who is it?
Is it Rocco Klein?
No, it's not them. It's the people that built the Y from Ohio. Yes, Rudolph Libby, Brad, you're so smart. Rudolph Libby, he works for Rudolph Libby. People like that are going to, our Township Fire Chief, Adam Mazengill, we're, we're working with, again...
The cost of what it's going to cost?
Yes, they will give an estimate of the cost.
But the people that's on that committee won't. I don't feel that they're, they're expertise. It might be a special field, but to give a price, because I'm on the committee, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, yes.
My specialty's electrical, but there's no way I can go out and say, this building needs this amount of money and this amount of work. There is a, there was a proposal for a company to come in and do that and it was proposed, but there was no monies. So that's why we haven't met in two or three months. but there was no monies, so that's why we haven't met in two or three months, I imagine, I'm not, and, and...
Right.
So, what I'm saying is, is I think we ought to make it part of these minutes, Karen, that'll be on our agenda at the regular monthly meeting, and if we don't have it, then maybe put that on there, but I think that...
I agree.
It should be part of this meeting now.
Okay.
You know, because you got everybody here, you set apart that time. In the past, we have met for the CIP meetings, we've met on the same day, only in the morning. So, anybody that has to go to two of them, then you're already set that time aside, so...
That's a very good suggestion, Ron. We can, we can make that happen as long as we're having a regular meeting on planning. Is that amenable to you, Joe? No, not that either?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, I think we need to, what Brad says, that we've got to look at and think, it's got to work for everybody, if it's a half-hour before, if it's, you know, and like Brad said, you know, time and I'm busy tonight at night, but I think it's important to try to make them, you know what I mean? It's just, this, this township is one of the two townships, I think, in the county that is really, really working to do things in for business. And I met with a guy before I came here, it's an engineer, he said he dreads going to some of the Township, other Townships because of it, and I think that what we have here is, I mean, we've got a great board, we've got a great supervisor and everybody on, I think it's finally, you know, some good things, like what, what happened tonight here? Those, like Karen said, those lots sat there, sat there for years, the footprint doesn't work for that. Let's get something that can go in there, but it doesn't hurt these people, and, you know, what if that was zoned and I don't know if it is? And the guy said, I can't put cars there, and you got to look at cars that don't sell, you know, and, I mean, everybody, we try to think of everything here, but, you know, developing and getting this, this, this Township's come a long ways in the last five, six years, I think, so, I think it's very important, just, doesn't matter to me when we meet, but I think Mr. Fritz is, you know, if you're already here, but if there's no funding and you can't do anything too, I'm just thinking out loud what I've been listening to, you know? I wish we, wish we did have the money for some expertise, because when you go to put a roof on, you know, Mr. Fritz has been local eight member for how many years? Thirty, forty years or whatever, electrician and ran jobs and everything. It's, you need these commercials, it's not just easy, and Brad builds houses and everything, and you want to know about your infrastructure there. We, we've got a great community here, you know, I came from Whiteford, grew up there, and the difference is 3,700 people to, what do we have here? Four, 40,000, I don't know, 38,000?
31,000.
Thirty, thirty-one, prior to the upcoming census, 31,085.
Yeah, to 2,700 at Whiteford, you know, and they have, they have a deal over there that they want to stay rural farm and stuff, and there's a deal over here. I mean, when you look at, since I grew up and Karen and all of us, look at the old Food Town Corner at Secor, that, I mean, it's just amazing to me, and it's a, it's a neat community. It's so close, right to the border, it's just, it's got a lot of neat things. It's got a zoo.
Yeah, we have a zoo, that's true. Well, I, I agree with you, Joe, and I think that, I, I, I'm sorry if I gave the wrong impression, this commission is not going to assess what it costs to put out, to do any improvement in the infrastructure. We're not going to assess that. We are going to hire somebody to do that work. It's just that writing up the plan and determining what our assets are, those kinds of things, we can do. We've all been here many years and we, and, you know, Dennis is very, very familiar, I should say, expert in this area, so we have his guidance too. We'll just have to pray that he gets over his illness, which I, I know he will. Yeah, no, anyway, I wanted to bring your attention to this, that it is responsibility of this commission, and I don't intend to overwork the Planning Department through this, but if you would just assist in being a depository.
I, I personally like the idea of if we go around and cancel a meeting to instead replace this on the agenda, if the agenda is a lighter night, which we can usually tell ahead of time, then put it on at the end of that, or if you need to, have the designated first Wednesday of the month. So, we have three options that could work, I think, most of the time.
Well, I'll be sure to work with them to work that out. I'm glad you're all, excuse me, I'm glad you're all in agreement because it makes it, 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 I just think it's good that we're all understanding this.
I agree, I agree.
Good.
I mean, you got to do what's best for the community, so...
That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments from the commission? I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion, meeting adjourned.